Well, good evening, everyone. I think I'll go ahead and get started. And I know that there may be some more folks logging in, but we have a good virtual crowd tonight, which is great. So first thing, I want to introduce myself. My name is Stephanie Cooper, and I'm the Deputy Commissioner for Policy and Planning with Mass DEP. And it's my pleasure to welcome you on behalf of our agency and the Baker Toledo Administration to this second in a series of virtual outreach opportunities that we are hosting this summer and early fall to seek public input on our Solid Waste Master Plan for 2020 to 2030. I really want to thank you for joining us. And I do want to start by noting, by letting you know that we are recording this meeting to help us make sure that we're capturing everything that you have to say tonight. And we will be posting the recording and the video from this meeting on our website. And as I said, this is our second meeting, and we have posted the video and recording from our first meeting, so that's also available. I also want to start by introducing our team. We have our Assistant Commissioner for Air and Waste, Christine Kirby. We have, who I think has just raised her hand there. Greg Cooper is our Division Director in the Bureau of Air and Waste for Hazardous and Solid Waste. And John Fisher is our Deputy Director for Solid Waste Materials. And I also want to note some other folks who work on air and waste issues. Will Mbah, Shane Settlesing, and I believe Laura Swain is here, although I can't see all of the boxes. Another important person I want to recognize, who I believe is here or is registered to join us, and that is State Representative Rosalie Vincent of Revere, who has been a strong and consistent voice on solid waste issues. And I want to thank she and her staff for their interest, and we look forward to hearing from them tonight. So tonight is really about hearing from all of you. We're really eager to hear your perspectives and your ideas about managing solid waste and recycling in Massachusetts. And I want to really emphasize that those could be big picture statewide, national, international ideas for international and scope, or they could just be based on your personal experience in your own community dealing with solid waste and recycling issues. It's all equally important to us, so we look forward to hearing from you from whatever perspective you'll be speaking to us from. So I'm going to be walking you through the agenda. I'm going to give you a brief introduction and a little bit more context for our discussion tonight. I do have to start with an apology that I have a scheduling conflict tonight, so I'm going to have to log off of our meeting partway through. But I really wanted to be here for the first half. I wanted to welcome you, and I do hope to hear many of the comments that people have to offer tonight. And at this point, I'm going to turn the program over to Kurt Cabral, who is our Zoom support expert. And he's going to give you a little bit of information about how virtual participation will work tonight, how you can let us know when you'd like to speak, and other ways that you can share information with us tonight. So Kurt, I'm going to turn it over to you.
Great, thank you, Stephanie. And thank you, everybody, for joining our Zoom call tonight. Before I hand it back over to Stephanie, Greg, John, and Christine, I want to reiterate what Christine, sorry, Stephanie, had said, that your comments are being recorded tonight. In order to minimize background noise, currently, all attendees in this meeting are on mute. However, there will be opportunities to provide feedback. And throughout the meeting, participants will stay muted unless otherwise called upon. In order to provide feedback when we ask for your input, we ask you to do the following. If you haven't already done so, please enter your full name, if not currently showing, so we can easily identify you. For those new to Zoom, you can do this by opening the Participants Panel, if not already open. For many, it will be docked on the bottom of the screen. Once you see the panel appear on the right side of your Zoom window, hover the mouse over your name in the Participants List, you will see the More option. Under More, you can select Rename. Okay, please take a moment and put your full name for the record now if you haven't already done so. If you're having any difficulty doing this or with any Zoom feature, you can use the Chat option at the bottom of the screen and direct your question in the pull-down to our Zoom Support Team, Meredith and myself. We have the power to rename you if you can't do it easily. You'll see the names list. I just mentioned the Participants Panel, followed by Title and Zoom Support. We're here to help you at any point tonight. We strongly encourage you to keep both the Chat Panel and Participant Panel open throughout the meeting, if possible, since you need both in order to provide feedback. Excuse me. When we open the virtual floor for feedback, we need your help to keep us organized, to determine who wants to speak. You do this by raising your virtual hand, which is typically found by selecting your name in the Participant Panel and choosing Raise Hand. For many on desktops, it will be docked at the bottom of the Participant Panel. For those joining us on iPhones, Android, you will find this under the More option. If there are multiple hands raised simultaneously, our team will do its best to get you in the order you raised your hand. Take a moment and find the Raised Hand option, which may be different, in a different location based on your device or browser. As practice, please raise your virtual hand now. Again, if you can't figure out how to do this, please reach out to our Zoom Support Staff, Meredith or myself. Okay, and keep your hand up if you can. Okay. Seeing about half of you finding the virtual hand at the moment. Okay, I'll give it another few seconds. Again, you can reach out to Meredith or myself if you're having difficulty. Okay, when it's your turn to provide feedback, one of our team members will give you some advanced notice on the Chat Panel. The Zoom team will then unmute your line and lower your raised virtual hand once you start talking. Keep in mind that sometimes there is a delay of a few seconds. And for those who haven't already done so, we encourage you to share your video by turning on your video camera. The feature to stop and start your video for most will be docked at the bottom of the screen. Thank you. I'm going to turn the presentation back over to our Mass DEP team.
Thank you very much, Kurt. So now we have up on the screen our agenda for this evening. And we've covered the first two items. And so I'm going to talk a little bit about why we're having these meetings, what we're hoping to accomplish by engaging with the public, engaging with different communities, and the particular areas that we've identified for focus in tonight's meeting. And you may have seen that in the materials when you registered or the materials on our website, but we'll talk a little bit about it. And then when I'm done, I'm going to introduce John Fisher, who's going to give you a brief overview of the Solid Waste Master Plan. And you may have seen some of the materials on our website. There's a sort of a Solid Waste Master Plan 101 that you can listen to. And these materials will be available after the meeting, too, so it's not necessary that you have, you know, a deep amount of background in order to participate tonight. We encourage you to participate, you know, from whatever your perspective or point of view is tonight. So as we go through each of the three areas that we'd like to focus on tonight, we're going to give people an opportunity to share their views, ideas, and concerns. So we'll take one issue at a time and then have a dialogue. And then we'll move on to the next issue and open the floor for comments in that same pattern. So with that, I'm going to give a little bit of context, and I think we can go to the next slide. That's perfect. So last fall, we released our draft master plan. We sought public comment. We held four public hearings. We got a lot of interesting and insightful input reflecting different ideas and perspectives from people across the Commonwealth. At the same time, we were asked to engage with more communities to be sure that we really had connected with people in different communities, and particularly to make sure that we were considering the concerns of environmental justice communities, those communities that are bearing most disproportionate amount of environmental burdens. And, you know, recent events have certainly boldly highlighted the need for discussions about racial equity and environmental justice in a way that perhaps we could not have imagined when we started this process last fall. So at this time, we, as public servants and, you know, in government, owe special attention to those communities that have borne these disproportionate burdens and have not received the equal benefits. And we need to make sure that we're considering these issues and these impacts, in particular, in this update of the plan. And we need to make sure that we're developing as part of the plan and being thoughtful about a way to engage regularly and on an ongoing basis with these communities. And we're committed to doing that as an important element of the plan. So the second issue is, given the ever-expanding impacts of climate change, we also wanted to highlight climate issues and how they play out in managing waste and other materials. And, you know, obviously, the third issue is, you know, front and center for everybody, every day. Since last fall, when we released the plan, COVID-19 has changed our world. And that includes changes to the ways that solid waste is generated and managed. And clearly, we know we're still living through the COVID-19 emergency, and it's important to consider what issues have emerged during this time or may emerge as we move forward. So for all of these reasons, we decided to seek more input through public comment and through these meetings to focus on these three areas as they relate to solid waste: environmental justice, climate change, and COVID-19. And I do want to stop and recognize our partner organizations who really urge the department to seek more input. And not only did they urge us and advocate us for us to do it, they also helped us. So I want to recognize Clean Water Action, Community Action Works, Conservation Law Foundation, and Mass Perg. And they are represented here tonight, so you may hear their voices as we go through the program. So we launched the second comment period on June 25, and it will remain open through September 15. So you can think about, you know, you can share comments and thoughts with us tonight, but you also have more time if you choose to provide written comments to the department, which we encourage. You have some time to collect your thoughts and submit something to us in writing. And we'll share details at the end on how you can do that. So like I said, tonight is the second of four meetings that we are hosting, all of which will be held virtually. The other meetings are on September 1 and September 10. So with that, I am going to stop and turn the program over to John Fisher, who will give you an overview of the Solid Waste Master Plan.
Thanks, Stephanie. We pulled a little switcheroo on you.
No, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. I forgot. My apologies. And at the first meeting, John Fisher played this role. And in fact, Greg Cooper is going to give the overview of the master plan. I'm sorry, I missed that cue.
No worries, no worries. Thank you. Welcome, everybody. My name is Greg Cooper. I am the Division Director for Hazardous and Solid Waste at DEP. And we're just going to go over a little bit of the overview, provide a little bit of overview tonight, and then we'll jump right into the sessions. Once again, I want to thank you all for taking the time out of your night to come out and come online and have this discussion. It's important. Obviously, everybody in the Commonwealth deals with solid waste in some way, and we're trying to get as much comment and input as possible on our very important plan. Speaking of the plan, first off, Mass DEP Solid Waste Master Plan, we are required to maintain the Solid Waste Master Plan. It's a part of our statutory obligations. We prepare a plan every 10 years. That's the cycle we've been on, traditionally, for the most part, since 1990. The development of the plan is one where we really are trying to chart the course of where we want to be in terms of managing solid waste for the next 10 years, at the end of the 10-year period. So the plan actually, you know, is the program and policy framework for the next decade. It's an opportunity for us to look back at what we've done, what kind of successes we've had, where we need to improve, and then plan and propose this new course to try to reach those objectives. We will continue to revisit the plan. One of the things we'll mention is that the plan is fluid. We have a number of subcommittees through our Solid Waste Advisory Committee and subcommittees within the Advisory Committee that are meeting regularly to talk about various aspects of the plan and the implementation of it. And it's one of the things that we want to do is kind of continually evolve the plan as things change, like they have over the past six months. So the plan, we're also looking at an opportunity to revisit the plan in a mid-course area to kind of think about where we're at, where we're going, and are we on the right path still? So as we said, tonight is really, we had our fall, we had sessions in fall, public hearing sessions in fall, where we took a lot of comments. But we also realized that a lot of things have changed since then, and we want to take some specific kind of key questions, which if you read the announcement, we really want to kind of get into what, some specific topics that are most relevant or particularly relevant in today's world. So, you know, first off, you know, what specific changes are faced by populations that are disproportionately impacted by solid waste activities? You know, and how could the Commonwealth's Solid Waste Master Plan address these challenges? That's first up. You know, in terms of environmental justice, how can environmental justice communities be better reflected in how waste is managed in Massachusetts? And then also, are there specific policies or programs that can be recommended that would address the solid waste management concerns of environmental justice communities? So there may be other questions that you have in this topic of environmental justice and solid waste. You're welcome to raise them. We may not have captured everything here, but the topic is really, in essence, environmental justice and solid waste. The next piece we're going to be talking about tonight is we're going to look at, you know, what the impacts or relationship is between solid waste and climate change. And specifically, what we were, our question was being asked is what actions can be pursued to reduce carbon emissions from management of solid waste to help meet the Commonwealth's Global Warming Solution Act? I'm going to let Stephanie or Christine give a little bit about, a couple sentences on the Global Warming Solution Act, just so folks know. Maybe that's you, Christine, since Stephanie's may have had to leave.
Sure, Stephanie's still there, but I can do that.
No, go ahead, Christine.
Yeah, so the Commonwealth has a Global Warming Solutions Act, and it's been in operation for many years. And for 2020, we have a greenhouse gas reduction goal from 1990 of 25% below 1990 emissions. And we're well on the way of getting there. But we're now in the process of planning for future goals for 2030, 2040, and 2050. So the Executive Office of Energy and Environmental Affairs, as you may know, put a goal or requirement out for 2050 to be net zero by 2050. And they're in active planning for establishing a 2030 goal. So we've done great work so far in reducing emissions from the electricity sector, somewhat the transportation sector, and other sectors. But the question really is, from a solid waste perspective, what actions we can take or think about to reduce emissions in support of our Global Warming Solutions Act goals? So this is a wide-open question. There could be things in the Commonwealth that we could pursue. There could also be some other measures that would help us get to the goals. So that's really a wide-open question, and we're looking forward to hearing from what you have to say and what you recommend for the solid waste.
Thank you, Christine. And then our third question is, you know, kind of what we've all been living for the past few months. And what impacts does COVID have on waste management? And are there specific waste management initiatives that may be problematic or beneficial, you know, to implement as we kind of adjust to the impacts of COVID-19? So we're going to take these in order: environmental justice, climate change, and then COVID impacts. And we'll open it up. I'll keep my eye on the watch, my clock here, to make sure we cover all the topics within the time we have. But I also want to make sure that, you know, folks will raise their hands. Welcome to, you know, will be picked up by Kurt and put into a queue. Some of the things I just want to remind relative to the overall master plan, if you haven't had a chance, go online. We've got a draft plan that's up there in written form, an excellent 30-minute presentation by John Fisher, giving you an overview of the entire plan and other information that is very relevant, I think, to understanding what's trying to be done and help maybe formulate some of your comments. So without further ado, why don't we get into the first topic? Since there's about 35 people online, I'd like, you know, we're going to ask folks to try to keep their comments succinct so we can try and get everybody who has comments. If we can always come back around if there's extra time. So right now, we're kind of looking at spending about 20 minutes on each topic. Let's go ahead and get started with environmental justice. So as Stephanie had mentioned, you know, and as we're all, we all know, there's, you know, we have some specific challenges that are faced by populations that are disproportionately impacted by solid waste activities. And the Commonwealth's Solid Waste Master Plan is an opportunity to identify those and potentially propose solutions, you know, to those challenges. So again, how can environmental justice communities be better reflected in how waste is managed in Massachusetts? And lastly, are there specific policies or programs recommended that would address the solid waste management concerns of environmental justice communities? So I'm going to open it up for discussion. If you want to, please say something. Raise your hand. We're off and running.
Greg, we have one person who has their hand raised, actually, no, two. Shane has had his hand raised for a while, so I'm not quite sure if it's, was the practice or not. But we'll start with Shane.
Yes, I think that was just the practice. I'll lower my head.
Okay. Thanks, Shane. All right. If Shane doesn't have a question, the next person up is Rosalie Vincent. And Meredith, can you take Rosalie off mute? There we go. Okay, you're all set. Rosalie, we're not hearing you. I know if your sound is not coming through, but if you have a question, you can put it in the chat. We can read it. Okay, I'm not seeing a question come through, Greg. We can always circle back. Let's move on to Cindy. I'm not, I'll try to pronounce your name. Orange, Lexington.
Cindy Evans, thank you. So I am a member of the Sustainable Lexington Committee, but I just want to make clear that my comments right now are my own. Lexington's trash goes to an incinerator in North Andover. Most of our, as we know, most of our trash in Massachusetts goes to incinerators. And incinerators, waste-to-energy incinerators, have been well-known, well-documented to be just as bad or worse than coal power plants in terms of the emissions generated when trying to create the equivalent amount of energy. So I, and we know that six out of seven of the incinerators in the state are in environmental justice, in or near environmental justice communities. Lexington's trash goes to an incinerator that is an environmental justice community. And I think that we should be paying attention to this and basically phasing out waste-to-energy incinerators. We need to obviously reduce our waste that's going there. And one way that we can do that is diverting food waste. We can make a big impact there, but we have to reduce our waste and then eventually phase them out to some more environmentally friendly, less emitting, polluting incinerators. And we also know that, I know we haven't started talking about COVID yet, but there's been documentation of, you know, communities of color and environmental justice communities being hit worse by COVID-19. And if these communities, and then the pollution that is generated by these incinerators are happening in these communities, and so that's making the effects or has the potential to make the effects of COVID-19 even worse. So it's a big thing there. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. The next person is Deborah Panetta.
Good evening. Yes, my name is Deborah Panetta. I am on the Sogas Board of Selectmen, and I have been for the past nine years. I'm also the President of the Sogas River Watership Council and a member of the Sogas Action Volunteers for the Environment. Although I am a member of the Sogas Board of Selectmen, these comments that I'm making are my own. Sogas is the host community of the oldest incinerator in the United States. And as the previous speaker just said, six out of seven of the incinerators that are in Massachusetts are environmental justice communities, including Willabretta Sogas. Being the oldest incinerator, we are lucky to have the unaligned ash landfill that's right next to the incinerator, which is located in an area of critical environmental concern. Lately, not just lately, but for years, but really lately, we've had fires, terrible chemical smells coming out, and ridiculously sounding noise. Last year, we had to listen to it for six weeks. This year, we're again with the terrible noise due to turbines, and we're not getting the communication that we need from Willabretta Sogas. As you know, the DEP came to Sogas, met at the high school last fall regarding nitrogen oxide, and you had some public meetings on that. They cannot comply with the new nitrogen oxide standard, so they are buying emission credits from more efficient incinerators. That doesn't help us in Sogas Lynn Ray there. So we need to do something. The landfill should have been closed in 1996 with a grassy seed. They've gone to extension after extension. But we in Sogas, we are living with this, we'll call it a white elephant within our community. And we really need help from the DEP, especially being an environmental justice community. We need to be doing more to help the people in Sogas. I am willing to, I've been working on this for over 30 years, not just as a selectman, but as a town meeting member, as just a community advocate. If there's anything that I can do, please reach out. More than happy to help out any way I can. But we need to do something to keep Sogas safe. That's the most important thing, is to have a healthy community. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Deborah. The next question we have, Greg, is from Janet Dominance. Take your off mute.
Hi, can you hear me?
We can.
Thanks so much. I just wanted to make a quick comment, which now I think it's going on two years. I actually have the honor of sitting on the Solid Waste Advisory Committee for the DEP and was, so have been just part of the process from the beginning of drafting this. And I remember we had a consultant do some research as the draft was being put together. And he made a presentation, which was a look at, you know, what's happening in Massachusetts. And the first slide was how many disposal facilities there are. And I didn't see the word "incinerator" at the bottom of the graph. And I asked, you know, where are all the incinerators? And the answer was, oh, they're labeled as waste-to-energy facilities. And I am not like somebody who stands on, you know, semantics or what have you, but I think as we talk about creating policy around this, you know, we need to be real and we need to be, you know, fact-based. And waste-to-energy is branding that I feel like, pun intended, we need to dispose of. Because waste-to-energy is a waste of energy. It's dirty. And really, we're just talking about burning garbage. And so I just wanted to flag, it's not environmental justice-specific comment, but throughout the conversation, it's just going to be like a zing to me every time someone says that, because I feel like that's industry branded. Because I feel like that's industry branding, and it is not reality. So, that's all I wanted to say. Thank you.
Thank you.
Janet? All right. Just another call out to Rosalie Vincent, I know some of the technical issues involved. And you can directly chat with Meredith if you are having technical issues, but we're taking you off mute now. I don't know if you can hear us. Try this again. Okay, we just took you off mute. Okay. Sounds like we're having technical issues with the mic there. So, if you could just put your question in chat, and we can read it aloud. But in, let's just move on to David O'Leary next, and we'll just come back to Rosalie Vincent. She has a question.
Sure, thank you. This is David O'Leary. I live in Springfield, Massachusetts. And I'll really just be very quick to echo the comments that were made by the previous speakers here regarding incinerators and how, you know, recognizing all of the, the challenges here. But somewhere, at least moving into plan toward phasing out incinerators, whether that can happen in the, in the next 10 years or not, obviously, again, is a difficult challenge. But making, setting clear goals that over the next 10 years, we, we move in that direction is, is very important. The incinerator out here is not located in Springfield, but it's right across the river, almost within sight of my house. And of course, with the prevailing winds blowing into Springfield, which is one of the highest asthma rate communities in the, not only the state, but the country. Not having that pollution here would be, would be, is something we really need to move toward. Thanks.
Thank you, David. The next one we have with a raised hand is, I apologize if I pronounced any of your names incorrectly tonight. Pamela Goodwin.
Yes. Can you hear me?
We can.
Great, thank you. My name is Pamela Goodwin, and I live in Sogas. And I could not agree more with the previous speakers. Mrs. Panetta and I have worked together. I'm a member of Sogas Action Volunteers for the Environment as well. And we think it's, it's absolutely critical that we try and phase out the incinerators across the state. I'm just wondering if the DEP Master Plan will emphasize, again, sort of the achievement of zero waste. Because otherwise, you know, how are all of our communities, you know, basically going to get out from under the burden of being host communities or neighboring communities to these incinerators? So, I would really like, you know, the achievement of zero waste to be reflected in the plan. And, you know, DEP really needs to take the lead in helping our communities achieve zero waste. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, the next person up is Jackie Mercurio. Can you take her off mute?
Hi, can you hear me?
We can.
Excellent. Hi, I'm from, I'm Jackie Mercurio from Sogas. I have lived within a, less than a mile to Willabretta for over 35 years of my life. And my family has lived in this particular neighborhood for over 100 years. So, they have endured the Willabretta Sogas plant for its entire existence and the DiMario dump prior to that. Some of the things that I'd like to highlight for the plan would be the mass DEP response teams, way that they respond to issues at these host communities. I know that Sogas Willabretta has had many fires, and just as recent as two weeks ago. And the mass, the response team has not gotten to us and not protected our community. So, I think that should be an issue that is addressed. Also, along with the credits that these incineration companies get to inherit from their better counterparts is very frustrating for families that live in environmentally justice communities like mine. When we think that we're going to finally be protected, and our health is going to be protected, we find out that, that these businesses can just buy their way out of it. And it's getting very frustrating. And not only frustrating, it really is truly affecting our health. And aside from our health, it's also affecting the environment around Sogas, Riviera Inland. So, I really hope that we can start getting rid of waste-to-energy, calling it incineration, and starting to protect the communities, especially the host communities that are really negative impact, negatively impacted every day in their lives. And that's it.
Thank you, Jackie.
Thank you.
Okay. Next is Olivia Huli.
Hi, how are you? So, I just wanted to jump off of what Pamela said a few comments before and say that I am the Environmental Campaigns Coordinator for UMass Lowell's Massburg Chapter. And our big campaign this year is going to be implementing zero waste across our campus. And since everyone's virtual, hopefully across the state with all the students that are attending our university. And I think that one of the biggest ways that we're going to be able to do this is through sort of spreading awareness of composting and really separating out your solid waste to ensure that as little of it as possible is being disposed of through the state in ways such as incineration. And hopefully, as everyone else has stated, we can get rid of that. But I just wanted to mention and give everyone a little bit of awareness that we are working on similar campaigns in, to a smaller degree, across our state. So, it might seem like a lot right now, and it is a lot. But I think that if you break it down a little bit and have different campaigns sort of working towards the same goal across the state, it'll really help eat the elephant, so to speak. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hey, Greg, it's only Rosalie is the only one left we haven't heard from. And we haven't heard from her in chat either, but she's unmuted, so we might want to try again.
Yep, let's try. Is it possible that she could be on mute, on her mute, on her own computer?
Looks like she's turning herself on and off with mute. Yeah, so she's unmuted, muted again. I think chat might be the best option, if she could type in the chat box.
Okay, while, while, while she's trying that, I'm going to move to the next set of questions. As you can tell, and this happened at the last one, a lot of these issues all kind of meld together in the, in the world of solid waste. And whether it's environmental justice, climate change, the impacts of that, COVID. So, at our last hearing or session, the same thing kind of happened. But I'm going to go to the next set of questions, but it doesn't mean we can't, you know, we can continue to have dialogue on all of these topics as, as the night progresses. So, in terms of climate change, you know, as Christine mentioned, we're, we've set aggressive goals on trying to reduce greenhouse gases. And I guess what, a question for the folks on the phone and for people who want to comment on the master plan is kind of what actions can be pursued to reduce carbon emissions for the, from the management of solid waste in order to meet the global, the Commonwealth Global Warming Solution Act goals? The, in, in the context, that means it could be, what do we do to prevent more waste? That may be high generating carbon emissions. And also maybe, how does the system function? And what are we doing with the waste? Or what are we doing with the, how are we picking up the waste? All of those items can be included in comments in this topic. Take a moment to let folks raise their hands.
We have two right now, Greg. It is, I don't see the first name, it's V Wells.
Yes, I've put a comment in the chat, I mean, a question in the chat for the last series, but it's relevant here too. I'd like to find out, is mass DEP able to require incinerator operators to install the best available technology to reduce the emissions that would actually help the people right adjacent to the facilities? Because I agree with the previous speakers that allowing the offsets to be purchased doesn't benefit the communities that are suffering the greatest health hazards. And I think that this would also help with the Global Warming Solution Act, because the goal is to reduce the toxicity of the emissions, and the emissions are clearly bad. So, just purchasing offsets does not help Massachusetts reduce its carbon footprint.
Thank you. Next up is Cindy from Lexington again.
Thank you. I want to, I hope we don't sound like a broken record today, but it sounds like all of us that are attending are really sort of on the same page. I love that, that prior speakers brought up zero waste. I mean, if you, if you just sort of take that as a, as a, as a goal. So, if we don't have nearly as much waste as we have now, then we won't. There, there, there's so many ways that our carbon emissions are reduced because of that. I'll say again quickly about waste-to-energy incinerators. You know, their carbon footprint is, is, is as bad or even worse than, than coal power plants. So, reducing what we put there and, and phasing them out is, is going to go a long way. I also mentioned, you know, that the largest amount of our, of our trash, or the largest segment of our trash seems to be food waste and organic. So, getting that out and making compost or using anaerobic digesters to, to, to reduce the waste is going to go a long way. I also want to throw in there, because I don't know if I'll have a chance with the other questions, is working with the legislature on enhancing the bottle bill, working on extended producer responsibility, EPR legislation, to incentivize reducing the waste that we're generating, reducing what we're using, promoting reuse. So, that's going to reduce the waste that we generate. The, the current solid waste master plan, draft solid waste master plan, mentions things like paint and mattresses and electronics for EPR-type policies. But we should be including single-use plastics in there. We should be incentivizing producers to, to reduce the amount of plastics that they use, because it can definitely be done. And then put the, some of the money there into, to actual circular economies. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next up, we have Ann Devlin.
Can you hear me?
We can, Ann.
Great. Okay, at the risk of sounding repetitive, I would just like to, to repeat or add my two cents that the, the best actions that we can take to reduce carbon emissions, of course, is to send less to the incinerator. Of course, that's the very hard thing to do, right, is a for-profit. And they depend on large amounts of trash in order to keep their profits up. So, it's, you know, the, the health concerns that the DEP should make foremost. And then there is the need for the incinerators to, incinerator owners to keep up their profit. So, that we're kind of like coming in two directions. But the easiest way to, to send less trash there, if we're really going to cut, would be to start slowly with the two easiest things, which would be townwide textile pickup, as people need things to be as easy as possible in order to participate, and townwide composting. And I would add that I'm very proud to say that Sogas is one of the 35 or 36 towns that have already banned Styrofoam. And I would like to see a statewide ban on Styrofoam, because that would go also a long way in eliminating what goes to the incinerator. And Styrofoam is not a product that you want to be burning anyway. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Janet.
Thanks. So, I appreciated that Stephanie mentioned our organization earlier. And I wanted just very quickly comment, because a couple of people have brought up the goal of zero waste, and I wanted to make that concrete. Massburg Clean Water Action, Conservation Law Foundation, and Community Action Works last summer kicked off a specific campaign to ask the DEP to make this plan a zero-waste master plan. And in that ask, we created a pie chart, which makes this, I think, really simple. I mean, I'm not trying to say this whole process is simple, but it's, it's literally a pie chart that represents what gets disposed of now, what goes to landfills and incinerators. And very roughly speaking, as a couple of people have mentioned, about a third of what is now going to landfills and incinerators, a little over 30%, is food and yard waste, which should be obviously zero. So, you know, that's step one. Step two is paper and cardboard and paper products, which per DEPs on regulations have been banned from disposal for like 20 years. And we just need to enforce that and get all the paper and cardboard out. Remembered, and all of us here, I think, probably remember, we used to separate that stuff. Very marketable when it's separated. You know, we're already at half. Ann just mentioned textiles. I believe that's something like 11 or 12% of what goes to landfills and incinerators. Then you, you know, do the bottle bill, and you ban single-use plastics. And you very quickly realize that with, we don't have to invent anything new, and we could divert like 75% of what's being disposed of right now. And we take the next 10 years, and we work on that last 25%, which is all to say that zero waste is not some like idealistic concept. It's actually public policy that we've like mapped out in a pie chart that, you know, is just quite simple. So, that's our goal. And, you know, really appreciate the others that have mentioned that. Just wanted to put a finer point on how that is just so doable for Massachusetts. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Janet? Next up, we have Megan Stokes.
Hi, I'm Megan Stokes. I'm with Community Action Works. And again, I want to echo a lot of what some other folks have said. Even more clear that in terms of the climate change question, these incinerators release more carbon dioxide than a coal-fired power plant. And then if you take into account the entire life cycle or lifespan of an item, like, it is just clear that by sending less to incinerators, we'll hit our climate change goals. And Janet's point was really great. We do have so many of the tools already, if we just enforce the laws that we already have. And then I would also say, we need, we need to set more ambitious goals and actually have a way to track it. We set great goals 10 years ago, but we weren't really tracking it over the last decade. So, I think we need a more concrete plan for are we actually hitting these goals? And the goal needs to be higher. We need to get to spare waste way faster than what this plan is, because communities like Sogas can't live next to an incinerator forever. We need to get better. We need to get better at zero waste if we're going to ever shut the incinerator down. Thanks.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Megan. Next up is Deborah Panetta.
Hello again, Deborah Panetta from Saugus. Just a couple of things, please. The first is that somebody mentioned it earlier, waste to energy. When you say waste to energy, a lot of the people think that their electric bill is somehow being subsidized by the incinerator, because it sounds like all of the waste is going into energy, and it sounds like it's a wonderful thing, but people are very confused by what that statement actually means. So I totally agree with what the comment that was made a little earlier. We talked about reduction. I mean, in the past, we talked about producer takeback. I think that's a good idea, that's something that we should consider looking into, especially for large things. I mean, sometimes we get these boxes from Amazon or wherever, and you order something very small, and it comes in a very, very large box. Ann talked a little bit earlier about Saugus being ex- Styrofoam, we also banned single-use plastics. Saugus has been trying to do whatever it can to increase its recycling, but when you have an incinerator in your community, we're very cognizant of it, we drive by it every day, it's on Route 107. But other communities that Wheel Abraider Saugus is taking in trash from, where is their incentive to, to recycle and to reuse? And I, I don't know, we see it, we see it every day, and we're trying to do what we can do, because it's in our backyard, but when there's all these other communities, and they just keep on sending their trash to us, there's absolutely nothing that we can do. We're not getting any sort of a fee in for the amount of trash that comes into our community. In fact, back in 2011, there was a seven and a half million dollar settlement with Wheel Abraider Saugus, and how most of the monies were distributed, after the monies went to the whistleblowers and what have you, was based on the amount of trash that they were sending in to Wheel Abraider. And because Saugus sends so little in, a smaller percentage than a lot of the other communities, we got a very small dollar amount out of that seven and a half million dollars, again, with the incentive to reduce, recycle, reuse. There really needs to be something more that the DEP can do to try to help us. And one of the questions that I have is that within this new master plan, the solid waste master plan, is there something in there regarding allowing or disallowing more incinerators to be built? They're going to be any, are you going to allow for expansions for current incinerators in landfills? Is there something in there that they, the landfill can't go any higher than an X percentage? Or are you just going to leave that open? I'd like to know, I've been watching it over the years, every 10 years, we come up and what to allow and disallow, but I didn't see specifically what was allowed. So if you can answer that question at some point during this Zoom meeting, I'd really appreciate it. Again, thank you very much.
Sure, why don't I address that now, I guess, while we're here? So the plan currently says that, that we would permit replacement capacity for waste to energy plants. So if a, if one closed, or, you know, went out of business, or whatever, we would permit, someone could actually submit a permit to, you know, take that capacity and build another incinerator waste energy plant. The, so that's, that's one piece. Now, obviously, and they could build it, you know, wherever they choose to build it, they'd have to go through all the citing, permitting, everything, obviously, to do that, but it would be allowed under the current terms in the plan. And then additionally, we have an allowance for new waste management technologies. We've had that in the past plan. It was a 350,000 ton per year carve-out for new technologies or integrated waste management facilities that would, that would operate at a much more efficient, higher protective basis. So that was in the last plan, we carried it over in the current plan. There's a section in the plan that talks about this, so I would recommend, you know, definitely taking a look at that and, and, you know, submitting comments on that particular So I hope that answers your question. You're on mute, but that's okay. Well.
Do I need to take you off mute, Deborah? I can.
Yeah.
It was Deborah's question.
Yes, it was Deborah.
Okay.
Thank you. Yes, I can't unmute myself.
Sorry.
No, 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 that's fine. I kept hitting unmute, it says you cannot unmute. Oh, I thank you for the answer to your question, it's just, I, as one resident, find that to be a little bit scary. Again, we, we are the oldest incinerator, I've already mentioned that in my earlier comments, in the United States. There's been talk over the years about expansion, there's been talk about the landfill, they can go to 50 feet now with that ash landfill on that online, I said it was, which you never would allow today. There's been talk about that going higher. I don't get a warm and fuzzy with the answer, I appreciate the answer, but it does scare me as, as one resident in the town of Saugus, and I, I, I just want to protect my town. Thank you.
I understand, thank you.
Greg, I think we might have Rosalie Vincent, so we're going to kind of move her up to the top of the line. I think she has called in, there's a 781 number I'm seeing, so she might have used the phone option. So we're going to try one last time, if Meredith can unmute the 781 number I'm seeing in the panel.
Thank you, Kurt.
Yep, so I'm trying to unmute, but it's not doing it for some reason. Man, we are just having so many, so many issues with this. Ah, okay, we were hoping this would resolve it, that she's called in by phone, but it is not letting me unmute her.
Greg, did you want to try as host, maybe?
Sure, I can.
Not that that should make a difference, but just in case.
She's sitting under the Rs as Rosalie by phone.
Hold on, okay. Just says, ask to unmute, and I, I, let's see, the more part, I can rename, but merge with video. Doesn't give me an option to, to pull her in.
Sorry about the tech issues, everybody, thanks for your patience. Okay, let's move to the next person, and we might try one, one more thing. I'll keep chatting with Rosalie and try to resolve this.
Thanks, Meredith.
All right, so next is Olivia. Take you off mute. And Meredith, if you could do that, that'd be great. Just want to cancel each other out.
Hi, me again. I just wanted to jump off Janet's comment, a few people back with some 21-year-old input. So I recently graduated from Monmouth City Regional Vocational Technical School, and I remember when I was still a student there, we were separating our solid waste at lunch, so all of the food that we had left over would go in one, and then all of the recyclables would go in another bin, and then finally we would have trash that can't be recycled and can't be composted. And I think that that's important to note, because larger institutions like schools and universities have more eyes on them than the average household, so it's a little bit easier to keep them in line regarding how they're disposing their waste, and if we mandate that you have to separate certain things out, or however you can do that, it's easier to keep them in check than it is just your average household at home. So I did want to mention that I think it would be important to put more of a push on emphasizing the importance of participating to the average family in your regular Commonwealth household, from lower income to wealthier areas of the state. And I think that that can be done kind of the same as you've seen, like, the commercials to save the turtles by turning off your water when you're brushing your teeth. But I just wanted to mention that, I think that that might be an important thing to add when trying to plan for separation of your solid waste, because I think that making sure to separate it and push for that would definitely make a lot of things easier when it comes to the long run of solid waste management and disposal. That's all I have, thank you.
Thank you. It's Christine, I want to weigh in, because I know that folks are hoping that Representative Vincent can speak, is there a way that we could call her cell and have her?
So Christine, we've actually, Meredith and I have been chatting offline, and Meredith has spoken to her on her cellphone, she's been trying to assist her, you know, since we started having this problem. So I think Meredith is talking with her offline right now to see if we can find a solution. And, and obviously, we want to hear from the state representative, so I'm hopeful that we'll be able to find a solution, either by helping her to log back into Zoom, or working through the phone, or somehow conveying her comments, or figuring out a way to plug her into this meeting. So we will continue to work on that, and we apologize for this unfortunate technical difficulty.
I just didn't know if there would be feedback, if we could just have her on the phone and speak to, through the phone to the group, I don't know, I'm just a suggestion.
Put her on.
Yeah, so I believe she's on the phone line, but they're having trouble bringing her voice into the meeting.
Let's just get her on her cell.
Yeah, she's on with Meredith, maybe she could just put her on speaker.
Yep.
Meredith, are you still on with Representative Vincent?
I'm guessing she is, because I'm not seeing through chat. So why don't we go to Pamela, and I will chat with offline, and see if we get her up next, okay?
Great.
All right, Pamela Goodwin, you are next.
Okay, can you hear me?
Nope, now we can't.
Now we can't.
Okay, thank you so much, I apologize for that.
Take two, Pamela.
I just, I just wanted to sort of get back to one of Cindy Aaron's comments, she's the gal from Lexington. She talked about producer takeback, and I feel that this is really a critical matter. And I'd like to see DEP take a very strong and creative leadership role or approach to prioritizing this, this action. As I, I agree with what Debbie Panetta said as well, you know, sometimes you order things, it's very small, it comes in this humongous package, it's got all this packaging, and people just throw it in the trash. So, I mean, I'd, I'd love to see something that would really help producers incentivize changing the way they package materials. And then the other thing, Greg, I was, I have to admit, I was very disappointed to hear that DEP will allow new capacity if a incinerator were to go out of business or, you know, end its operations in any way. I mean, I, I feel like incineration is a dirty, filthy business, and our goal should be to eliminate that and replace it with more climate-friendly options. So I'd like, I'd like to see if that's possible, to rethink that, that possibility of including those sections in the plan this time around. Okay, thanks.
Thank you.
Hey, Greg and Kurt, this is John, I just wanted to grab one, one comment that was here in the chat from, from a few minutes ago, this is from David O'Leary, and he said, I concur with Cindy's comments, each of the approaches that she is describing, and which are outlined in the draft plan, move us in the right direction, but the specific plan should be outlined in more detail beyond those outlined in appendices A and B, with a timeline that minimizes the likelihood of getting to 2030 without achieving the goals. Also, given the climate crisis, the longer-term targets should be accelerated into this 2020 to 2030 decade, so we address some of the more difficult issues now, rather than pushing them off to 2050 or 2050.
Here.
Thank you. Thanks, John.
Okay, we have you now, I think.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Is that the representative? Yes, you were on.
Please go ahead, representative, we're glad to hear your voice.
Well, it's glad, I'm glad to hear my voice, too. It's, I don't know what was happening, but I just want to say, number one, thank you, and I'll introduce myself, I'm the state representative for Revere, Chelsea, and Saugus. And Saugus is home to the, as you heard before, the only unlined ash landfill in the Commonwealth, and actually, I believe that's actually operating in the Commonwealth, and the oldest incinerator in the entire United States. What I'm happy to hear is, I'm really excited to hear about you talking about environmental justice, the COVID crisis, and climate change, because Wheel Abraider Saugus could be the poster child for all three of those. Revere, Saugus, and Chelsea are in the red zone for COVID, they're also environmental justice communities, and they are also susceptible to climate change being coastal communities. So I'm really concerned with the master plan. I know that my friend and colleague Deb Panetta was talking about the master plan and your DEP's approach to allowing incinerators to be rebuilt or repurposed. My question, and I know that you answered it partially, but my question would be, if an incinerator such as Wheel Abraider Saugus, which has had enormous issues in the last few years because of its age, between fires, noise, emissions, releases, and unfortunately, DEP has not been forthcoming in, in, in really, I don't believe, investigating the situations. I know that we had a major issue with a fire burning for over four hours, and DEP didn't go out until 12 hours later. Someone from DEP said that they did call Wheel Abraider Saugus, and Wheel Abraider told them that it was nothing, it wasn't really anything, and they were able to handle it, which, as it turns out, wasn't the case, it was, it burned for four hours. There was a whole burning, the, the roof of the facility burned for over four hours, and it was a 20 by 20-foot burn. So it's, it's, I can't understand why that would not have warranted some kind of action from DEP. So I'm just concerned that, the question I guess I have is, would, would, Wheel Abraider Saugus be allowed to be rebuilt in an area of critical environmental concern, which it is, it's in the middle of a Romney Marsh? Would it be allowed to be rebuilt in, and surrounded by environmental justice communities? And would it be allowed to be rebuilt or repurposed in a flood zone where it's constantly being flooded? In March of 2018, we had a storm that actually caused flooding on both Route 1A and Route 107, and that, those are the two roads that surround Wheel Abraider Saugus. And if there had been a catastrophe or, or an event there, there would be no way of getting any emergency vehicles to that location. So, so it's exciting for me to hear that the three things that, that concern me about Wheel Abraider Saugus about Wheel Abraider Saugus in particular are environmental justice communities, COVID crisis and climate change. So I'm just wondering if you can answer the question about would, would a Wheel Abraider Saugus, considering what the location is, be allowed to, a new one to be put there? Thank you.
Yeah, I mean, I think that, you know, without getting specific on sites, with any of this replacement capacity that was described would be considered a new facility that would have to meet all of the existing current DEP suitability and local zoning and siting requirements, including the air components of it. So.
Yeah, it would have to go through stringent air permitting. It would also need to go through MIPA, which would include a greenhouse gas assessment. It would have a very stringent review if there were new capacity permitted there.
Thank you.
Kurt, this is Greg. I'm going to just introduce the next topic so that we can make sure we get all the topics on here. And I'll go to the next slide here just so people can have it in front of them. You know, we had talked, obviously, this has been on everybody's mind and does have big solid waste impacts as far as we can tell right now. So, you know, what impacts does COVID have on waste management in, in, from, you know, gathering input from you folks? And also, you know, are there specific solid waste, specific waste management initiatives or waste reduction initiatives that may be problematic or beneficial to implement as we adjust to the kind of impacts of COVID-19? So obviously, comments welcome on any of the topics right now. Just wanted to make sure we at least got that slide up in front of everybody.
We have one question. One hand raised, I see. Cindy from Lexington.
Thank you. So in addition to everything else that we've talked about before, as we, as we probably know, I mean, that with, with the need for PPE and, and all sorts of stuff, I mean, certainly, it feels like, I don't know if we have numbers yet, but it feels like our solid waste might, might be increasing during this time. So that's kind of worrying. So I think one thing that the Solid Waste Master Plan could, could do or focus on is specifically looking at this and looking at trends, looking at what's happened, what's happening and what we should do about it. Another thing I'd like to see is, is leadership in terms of, because I'm very concerned about going away from reuse and going to disposable and single use plastics and stuff. I mean, I know a lot of people, you can't go to restaurants until you're doing takeout. And, you know, it's important to, to support our businesses. But I, I think that it would be good for, for the DEP to show some, some leadership, you know, scientifically based, saying, okay, this is, this is okay to do. We don't have to, to abandon our, our push to reuse because of what's going on with, with COVID-19. So that's something that's on my mind. I mean, I'm thinking about, you know, the banning of reusable bags at grocery stores and, and having that sort of come back. And I think that, you know, something that what the state should do, the state should really be a leader and not sort of, just sort of flip flop on things. I know, I know with COVID it's difficult because there's a lot we don't know, but I just think that we need some, some, some leadership on that to help us out and not have us go backwards and, you know, build back better. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Cindy. Next is Megan Sterkes.
Sure. I, I'm not sure if this came up already, but we've already seen studies coming out linking people that live in areas with higher air pollution to worse outcomes for COVID. So that's the thing I'm mostly concerned about and the activists that we work with. And again, Saugus is a clear example of this. I mean, they're well past their retirement date. They're not, they've not intended to be operating this long. And even when they're operating normally, they release tons of air pollution from monoxide, dax and lead. And as we just heard, they're not often operating normally. They're catching on fire and the roof is burning for hours. There's a reason why we've had a moratorium on building new incinerators in our state because we decided 30 years ago, they're not good for health. And nothing's changed. Like, they're still bad for health. So there's no reason that we should be allowing new incinerators to be built. When this, when this came up, I guess it was about 12 years ago and there were proposals to build new incinerators around the state, we fielded tons of calls and we, like, no community wants these. Everyone knows it's not good to live next to an incinerator. So I don't even, I don't even want to see you try because communities will be up in arms. Like Saugus is rightfully so. Like, no one deserves to live next to these things. And, and we've already seen the bleeding towards outcomes for COVID-19. So, thank you.
Okay, Janet, you are up next.
Thanks. Well, one thing that COVID did, and, you know, to pick up on what Cindy said. I mean, the plastics industry spent, didn't waste one second getting out there with a false message about how somehow disposables were more hygienic. And as I assume everybody on this call knows, you know, at the end of March, the governor issued an executive order banning bringing reusable bags to the store and suspending the single use plastic bag bans that 139 cities and towns have on the books. And by the way, those 139 cities and towns have local measures on the books because we've been waiting more than 10 years for the state legislature to pass a statewide ban. So going back to Cindy's theme of leadership, we did a survey over the course of a couple of weeks, end of July into early August, and we asked 15 cities that had a bag ban, that have a bag ban on the books, what they were doing in the wake of Governor Baker lifting his order, which he did in July. And we got like 15 different answers. You know, some of these cities immediately let their bag ban go back, the reusable bag ban, I mean, sorry, the plastic bag ban go back into place. Some of the cities postponed until September 1st, some till October 1st, some till November 1st, some till January 1st. A couple of them have now put their single use plastic bag bans back in place. And so it's just insanely confusing on this, you know, most very basic thing that most people deal with on their day, in their day to day lives. So it's not some obscure law that you have to do research about. Most of us, you know, within the course of a week, go to a store and it's just ridiculously confusing out there. And so COVID has definitely made things worse in that way. And I just wanted to echo what Cindy said is we need leadership, we need public education, we need clear, you know, consumer tools for knowing how to do these basic things. And, you know, COVID's definitely set us back. So I'm hoping that we can, with DEP's help and leadership, you know, regain that ground and more quickly. Thank you.
Thank you.
We have another hand raised here, Greg. We have Deborah. I'll take you off of you, Deborah.
Thank you very much. Real quick question, if you don't mind me asking, and if it's a follow up, that's fine too. I've been attending all of our Board of Health meetings for the Board of Saugus. And one of the things, actually, two things, were ear quality monitors, which kind of falls under the whole COVID-19 thing. And then we also have noise monitors. And I've been asking for ear quality monitors, both from the DEP and from the Town of Saugus Board of Health, and noise monitors now for many, many years. So I was told that for the noise monitors, Wheel Abraider was working with the DEP to get five or six of them and a few of them would be in Saugus and then some other places. Do you know what the status is of the noise monitors? Do you have any status on the ear monitors? Because they said that they needed to talk to the DEP for me to get an answer to that. If you don't, if it's a follow up, that's fine too. But I'd really love to have an answer to that question, please. Thank you.
So on the noise monitors, I think what we can do is get back to you because a lot of that work is handled by our regional office. So we can definitely get back to you on that, on the, the air monitors. I'm not quite sure what your specific question is, but there are some, some things we're thinking about in terms of local air monitoring in, in some additional areas beyond our traditional air quality monitors, which, you know, cite the statewide air monitoring network that meets EPA criteria. We get federal funding for that to monitor both regional and local air, air quality standards to see whether or not we're in, we're meeting federal standards. But we are looking at some additional air monitoring work to look at COVID affected areas. But that's, that's what I can answer tonight, but we are continuing to look at those, those issues. But the noise thing, I can get back to you.
If somebody could please get back to me, I'd like to let the rest of the Board of Selectmen know and the constituents know about the noise monitors. Ear monitors, people are concerned because of the odor, the chemical smells. I mean, just being in the vicinity of an incinerator with the smoke stacks coming out. People are afraid for their health. People are, it's, it's not good when you see smoke coming out. It's not just all air vapor. I think that it would make the, the neighborhood feel better to know that the ear they're breathing, the ear their family is breathing is safe. And with the different types of odors and smells and smoke that comes out of Wheel Abraider Saugus, people don't feel that way. So if we could do some work and get some ear monitors, I mean, if it all came back and everything was great, I don't think he would hear us, the concern, at least I'll speak in my voice. Because I am very concerned about the health and welfare of not just Saugus, but Saugus, the people in Revere and Lynn. It's, it's been problematic for a long time. And the noise, as you know, last summer, the six weeks of that terrible noise, we had the noise again not too long ago. There, as Representative Vincent mentioned, it just seems to be incident after incident. So whatever we can do to try to alleviate that, to calm the nerves of the people that live in the nearby area adjacent to Wheel Abraider Saugus, the better it will be for everyone. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Deborah. I think that's it for questions right now, Greg.
Okay. I just want to also know, you know, we weren't gonna, you know, and we didn't exclusively looking for comments on those topics. If there are other comments in the master plan, we're still taking public comments on it. If there are other comments that folks have about the plan, you know, you've provided an excellent kind of set here tonight. And I would encourage, you know, everyone to submit those thoughts again and writing to us. We'll document all of this and post this. But if there are further questions or comments about the plan and management of solid waste related to EJ, COVID, climate change, you name it, we're here to listen.
Hey Greg, there's one more in the chat here. This is from Alex Eves. In regards to not being able to use reusables, there is a great campaign in the UK called Contactless Coffee. It's to help keep reusable coffee cups on the menu. I'd be glad to get this cranking in Massachusetts. I haven't gone to a coffee shop in five months. And there's a link, city2c.org.uk/contactlesscoffee. So that's from Alex Eves.
Great. Thanks for the tip.
And Greg, we have some additional hands raised. Cindy, we can take you off from you.
Thank you. I, can you hear me? Okay, I had some problems with my, my earbuds.
Yep.
Thank you. I know I mentioned this multiple times about doing work to divert all of our food waste from, from the trash. I know that, I mean, the state, the DEP has done a great job in sort of helping that get started, being, I think, a leader in the country, getting food waste diversion happening. In the current Solid Waste Master Plan, I know that the, the goal is to basically reduce, divert 50% of our food waste in the next 10 years. I think with the great work that the, that the state has done, the way that the, the food waste diversion, you know, either by composting or anaerobic digesters, that, that industry has grown a lot and I think it can handle it. And I think we should, the, the DEP should to consider setting the goal of 100% in the next 10 years. I mean, everything that everyone's saying here is we don't, we don't have time, we should, we shouldn't get on top of it. So I think that DEP should consider, you know, sort of making an even more aggressive goal there. One other thing that hasn't been mentioned, I know the DEP talks about in terms of glass recycling. There, I think it was something about getting an operator to crushing, crushing the glass and turning it into construction fill or something like that. I, I think a lot of us might, might know that we lost, we had an actual glass recycler, like turning glass bottles into new glass bottles that, that stopped operating in the, in the region. And I think that's something that the, the Solid Waste Master Plan should, should focus on and include. Glass is one of those things, although it's heavy, and so in terms of transport, it's not quite good for the environment to the extent that it's still used, it's one of those things, unlike plastic, that can be recycled over and over again. So that's something that you should consider as well. Thank you.
Thank you. We have another raised hand here. Anne Marie Green.
Yeah, hi. My name is Anne Marie. I'm a campaign associate with MassPerg on the Right to Repair Campaign, but I have a comment on the change in global recycling markets, which is mentioned in the plan. So I'm curious as to how the grant funding that is mentioned in the plan to stimulate local recycling market development is being prioritized between end of life recycling and processing capacity and collection. So I, I'm curious as to how those grant funds are being delegated and if priority is being given to end of life recycling. Because with Malaysia and India promising bans in 2021, we don't want to end up, you know, sending recyclable paper and plastic to incinerators. Like, you know, as was mentioned, with the, the glass recycling plant shutdown has been happening with glass. So I'm wondering how those funds are being delegated.
I can say the application is out on the street right now for the next round and there's kind of a detailed explanation of, you know, what is eligible, what materials are eligible. We typically are taking and targeting materials that are difficult, have difficult market situations, such as the glass or mattresses. And also look at, at, you know, proposals that go across the board from, as you said, collection, processing and, and markets. You know, we want, so I would take a look at that application. It should explain a lot of where it is. And we can also, you're certainly welcome to get, you know, ask for a list of past awardees. They may actually be on the web, John, you may answer that. But certainly can give you a list of the past awardees that we've given to, which has run the gamut of different operations, but not a whole lot on the collection side. Typically, it's processing or trying to improve the quality of the materials that we're, of the recycled materials that are putting on the market and/or operations that are taking those materials and producing new products.
Thank you.
I don't see any other hands raised at the moment.
Okay. What I'll do is I'll, we'll keep, you know, keep the lines open there, Kurt, but I'll go to the next, yep. I'll go to the next slide just so that everyone knows where they can, you know, just to go kind of the, where the next steps are, where we're at here. Tonight, obviously, we held the hearing here. We're going to be holding two more of those, Tuesday, September 1st and Thursday, September 10th. Same time, 6 to 8. It's a Zoom call just like this. You can register to participate. I think also, in addition, we'll leave this up for a little while so that folks can take that information down. In terms of submitting written comments, we've got a specific location for those comments to come in to make sure we gather them all. It's the depp.swmp@mass.gov. You can email your, your comments there or you can send them in a written form As we said, as I said earlier, there's a lot of information on the plan. As we said, as I said earlier, there's a lot of information on the plan and past plans on our website under the Solid Waste Master Plan section. The draft plan is there, previous plans are there, studies that we have done on the market and on waste characterization are there. There's a whole host of information, a presentation by John, kind of outlets, about 25, 30 minutes long, and covers the whole, the whole plan. And also our updates. We do annual updates of solid waste, how much waste is being generated and where it's going, and track our progress on that. And each of those is up there up through 2018. We're in the process of finalizing 2019. But I would encourage you to take a look at our website and kind of, you know, digest a lot of that information and, and feel free to ask questions and provide more comments. Anybody else have their hand raised? Kurt?
There was one for a minute, but it's now lowered. So we'll open up the floor. If anybody has any other questions, feel free to raise your hand.
This is John. There's one more in the chat from Gina Vanderloop. This is good to get DEP's perspective on the trash and incinerator problem. Wheel Abraider Saugus seems like a particular liability for the DEP, and I'm anxious to hear your plan for its demise. I am particularly interested in this issue for the entire state. So thank you for your future focus on it. So that was one more that came in on the chat.
Thank you.
Greg, I do see Cindy's hand raised. You're unmuted, Cindy.
Yes, thank you. I just wanted to say thank you very much to the DEP for taking your time out tonight to listen to all of our comments, listen to all of our very impassioned feelings about this. And we really, we really care about this, and we care about our communities, and we care about our state. Thank you very much for listening to us. I had one small last question. I believe the deadline, if we were, if others were to submit comments via the email, is it, you know, end of business on the 15th? What, what's the timeframe?
John, was that 5:00 PM?
Yes. So the, the deadline we set was at, was the end of the day on September 15th. Now, if we happen to get something, you know, you know, a little bit after that, we're gonna take that, too.
Okay, thank you.
But this, this is Christine. I missed the last session, and I just want to say that I appreciate everybody coming out on a busy lives and in the evening. I heard some really great comments and great engagement on the three issues and other issues. So I appreciate everybody's input. It's given us a lot to think about for finalizing the Solid Waste Master Plan. So thank you.
Yes, and I would second that. You know, I've been doing this solid waste stuff for close to, you know, 25 years. And input is the most important part of this process that we have. You know, we can come up with ideas, and we can work with our stakeholders to develop the ideas and the policies and the framework. But we need the input of everyone to kind of solidify the plan. And, and even more importantly, once the plan is done, help us all execute the plan. And that's one of the reasons why you'll notice in the plan that's drafted this time slightly different in the sense that we have action plans that are ongoing engagement sessions. An example of one that some may be participating on right now is we have a new reduce and reuse work group. It's a subcommittee of the Solid Waste Advisory Committee. And my understanding is, you know, we're getting great participation. We're having, you know, 50 to 100, 150 people attend the work group sessions, providing input on what should be the focus in the area of reduce and reuse, and how can everybody kind of get, you know, on the same page and coalesce around some ideas to move them forward. And I think the action plan component and the fact that we will continue to meet, continue to have discussions will enable us to, to strive and move it further with the plan that we have developed here. So with that, there's no more questions or comments. I want to thank everybody for taking the time. As Christine said, you know, appreciate all the comments that you've provided this evening. If you, you know, welcome to put those down in writing with, to us also, or more, when you think about it and you have a chance to look at our website, look at all the information, please, the more, the better. And we look forward to seeing you on the next call. If you, if that's what you, if you want to participate and have new thoughts, old thoughts, come on down and do it. And otherwise, we'll call it a night. And unless there's a hand up, Kurt, are we good?
I'm not seeing any, Greg.
All right. I want to thank everybody again, and we'll be signing off now. And I hope you all have a very good evening. Thanks again.